My name is Barb Limons, a member of the League of Women Voters of Wheaton, and your moderator for this evening. I live in West Chicago, so I will not be voting for any of the candidates participating in the forums this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes candidates or parties for any office. The League is not affiliated with any political party. The League's purpose is to promote civic responsibility through the informed and active participation of citizens in government and civil civic discourse. Providing opportunities to meet candidates is a major mission of the League of Women Voters, so voters can become better informed about the issues facing their community and to become better acquainted with the candidates running for office. We are looking forward to a respectful exchange focused on the issues. We all benefit from a civil exchange of ideas rather than personal attacks. Our goal for the forum is that it will inform and inspire rather than divide. We do hope that candidates will speak about their goals and plans and refrain from speaking about another candidate or what another candidate has or has not done. All candidates on the ballot for Consolidated School District 93 were invited. But participating in tonight's forum are Meredith Groves, Allison Williams, Michael Levatt, and Masuma Rasvi. The format is, the format tonight is a forum and not a debate. Candidates are expected to accurately represent the facts, and their responses reflect their own views and opinions. All candidates tonight have signed and returned the ground rules by the deadline established in the invitation. These rules specify the format, time limits, broadcasting of the forum, and other rules related to the conduct of the forum. The candidates will begin in alphabetical order by position with their one-minute opening statement. They will then alternate the order in which they answer questions for one minute. After the question portion of the forum, each candidate will give a one-minute closing statement, continuing our alternating pattern. A member of the League will act as timer, and I will enforce the time limit. Candidates, you will see a paddle that will let you know you have 30 seconds, and then 15 seconds, and then stop. Should a candidate exceed the time limit, I will ask you to just finish your sentence and then move on to the next candidate. To ensure that the questions for tonight's forum represents a balance of topics, a panel of experienced members of the League of Women Voters has reviewed the questions submitted for appropriateness and to avoid duplication. So we are grateful to all of you in the community who have taken the time tonight to learn more about the candidates before casting your vote by attending or watching this forum. For those in attendance this evening, we ask that you listen attentively, turn off your phones and electronic devices, avoid commenting and disrupting others during the forum, and refrain from applause until the end of the forum. But finally, I want to say how appreciative we are of the candidates who are not only willing to serve in office, but who have agreed to be here tonight to share your goals and ideas. So let us get started. Candidate Groves, you have one minute for your opening statement.
I am Meredith Groves, and I am an incumbent board member running for reelection. A little bit about me and why I'm running. I have two children in the district, and I've always been very active in their schools. I've been a library volunteer at Cloverdale since my middle schooler was in grade, I was in kindergarten. I've also recently completed two years as PTA president and currently serving as PTA treasurer, and I'm a parent representative on the PBIS committee where I recently got a great job of escorting students off the stage after our talent show and got to be the first person to tell them what a great job they did. So I truly care about our schools and our staff and not just my own students, but yours as well. As a parent, I attended a lot of board meetings, and I was often discouraged by the lack of open discussion on important topics and lack of questions. And so when six seats came up in 2023, I decided to run. I wanted to make sure we had a fully seated and elected board who are willing to have open and transparent conversations, and that is from me.
Thank you. Candidate Levatt, your one-minute opening statement.
Evening. My name is Michael Levatt, and I am running for CCSD 93's Board of Education because I believe in the power of education and what fostering an equitable and quality environment means to our community and our children. I have, I also have two children in the district. I have a kindergartner and a seventh grader. And running is, running is important to me because I have a, like, my, my father-in-law is a permanent resident of the U.S., so I've seen what he's gone through and what that means to his community. And just as importantly, I have a sister with Down Syndrome. She went to U-46 for many years, and I've seen what this special education program has provided for her and what it means to other students in the program.
Thank you so much. I'm afraid your time has elapsed. Candidate Rasvi, your one-minute opening statement.
My name is Masuma Rasvi, and I'm a proud community member and parent of two students in D-93 and at Glenbard North. I grew up in neighboring Glendale Heights, and I've been a resident of Carroll Stream for 20 years. I'm a pharmacist with a science-based research background, and I'm currently working as a director in the drug development space. I'm grateful for the opportunities that my public education has awarded me in achieving my life goals, and I am passionate about providing similar opportunities for all students in our district. My key priorities for this position are student and educator wellness, data-driven decisions to support the needs and prospects of our students, fiscal responsibility, and equitable education for all. While I don't have an education background, what I will be bringing to the table are my real-world, STEAM-focused expertise, fresh ideas, and professional experiences, which will allow me to advocate for every student to excel and thrive to the best of their abilities in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Williams, your one-minute opening statement.
Hi, good evening. I'm Allison Williams. I'm a proud District 93 parent and a member of the Board of Education currently. I am seeking reelection because educating and supporting children is my heart and mission. I have been a school social worker in DuPage and Cook Counties for almost two decades. I have also held many community volunteer roles, school board member, PTA leader, and Girl Scout troop leader. In all of these positions, I've worked hard to strengthen the bond between schools, families, and the community in the best interest of children. During my 19-year career as an educator, I have experienced firsthand the challenges and things faced by our educators and the victories of public education in general. During my time on the board, I've been a strong advocate for student and staff wellness, school safety, and positive student outcomes. Additionally, I've advocated for and created opportunities for open communication and collaboration among stakeholders to ensure our schools serve the needs of our community. I am most proud of proposing and also bringing to fruition the Board of Relations Committee in District 93.
Thank you. Well, we'll now begin with our first question, and the first question is this. You are being charged to be create a 30-minute spot that to be published to encourage families to move into Community District 93. What, how would you describe the culture of the district? And what would you emphasize to encourage a parent to choose to live within Community Consolidated District 93? And we're going to start with candidate Levatt.
Hey, my, my wife was born or was raised here, and Carroll Stream, Carroll Stream has just been home for, for, for almost 11 years for us as a family now, and community is everything. And the community here is strong. Our school district is strong as it stands, too. There... I'm sorry. I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass on this question. I'm sorry. I, I'm nervous, but I'll pull.
Oh, that's okay. I understand. It's a tough question to begin with. Candidate, candidate Rasvi, what would your response be to people wanting to move into the district?
Sure. I think what I would start off with by emphasizing is that we are a very diverse and growing community with a very strong appreciation of global citizens. So in line with that, I think a lot of things really speak for that. So I think that our district has actually made strides in academic excellence as well and cultural excellence. And in terms of the diversity perspective as well, you know, we have a very diverse student body, and it's also reflected in a lot of the cultural aspects that we do, the celebrations that we have as a community whole. And I think that the key thing in terms of the global aspect and the growing community I want to emphasize is also that it's a great place to raise your children. I think that the community really is very welcoming and open in, in terms of that, and then, you know, we can actually come together to really create a fantastic environment for our kids.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
So my mom was a teacher for 35 years in District 15, Mark Court, and she used to always tell me that District 93 was innovative, and that was what I remember growing up, was that District 93 is very innovative, and they're always like on the cutting edge of things, and they're always the place that other educators go to learn. And so that is, I think, what makes our district so great, is that we are always looking forward, and that is a goal and vision for myself as a board member, always keeping that at the forefront. How are we remaining innovative with our programming, with our curriculum, with our teaching methods, best practices? Are we continuing to move forward and keeping our innovative reputation?
Candidate Groves.
I would have to insist that for part of our video, Dr. Hill is dancing through the halls of every school like he did for our COVID videos. I think that is a perfect example of how far our administration is willing to go for students, and he was just a heck of a dancer. Also, we have a, you know, just dedicated and talented staff in this district. We have a diverse community of parents who really care about their students and care about success here. And our administration, I know right now we have our dual-language committee under review. I know we have some other programs that are going to be coming up for review, and we're just always willing to look at what we're doing and seeing how we can do it better. And I think that's a real credit to our district.
And if the candidates don't mind, I'm going to give candidate Levatt just 30, 45 seconds to answer the question. It's hard to go first on that one.
I appreciate it. I agree with everything that was said here. Diversity is CCSD 93's strength, and I'm proud to be a part of this community. But there's always room for improvement, like, and that's what we are here to do, to work together towards a better community, better representation, better opportunity, and that is something that I believe the district cares about and our community cares about, and it's a noble pursuit, and I would welcome anyone to come join that pursuit.
Thank you. Candidate Rasvi, this question will begin with you. What is the biggest challenge facing District 93 right now, and how do you plan to address it if elected?
I think one of the biggest challenges that is being faced by our district currently is probably the well-being of our students and staff, so, and I don't just mean mental well-being, but perhaps of safety as well, too. And I think that comes in many different aspects that we need to address. So obviously, the mental, the physical, you know, the taking a holistic approach for the whole child, if you will. And I think that would be a key priority for me, so that's one of the, the areas that I'm really focused on. And in terms of the, the challenge, I think some of the ideas that I would be bringing to the table is that I, again, have a very, you know, a professional research-based background, so I intend to look at data-driven decisions to be making our, you know, the policies and setting the standards, the curriculum, et cetera, within the district. And I think that in terms of the well-being aspect, you know, there's a lot of challenges that I think we're facing globally as a community and locally, too. So starting with bullying, addressing those, coming up with creative ways to do that, and then also social media platform use as well is a key thing, and then staff and educator wellness as well. Thank you.
Candidate Williams, what's the biggest challenge facing District 93 right now, and how do you plan to address it if elected?
Sure. So a key issue, I think, and to echo what Masuma was saying, is ensuring a safe and supportive environment for all students and staff. When everyone feels secure and valued, they can focus on teaching and learning, and prioritizing both physical safety and mental wellness fosters a thriving school community. Another challenge I would say that we face is closing the achievement gap, as many districts around the country are facing a similar challenge, to ensure that all students, regardless of their background, had equal opportunities to succeed and be successful in the district. Addressing disparities through targeted resources, effective teaching strategies, continuing these things will continue to create inclusive, equitable education system where everybody can reach their potential.
Thank you. Candidate Groves.
Allison pointed out, I don't think we necessarily have one major issue. I think it's just, like many districts, we have many smaller issues. One of our bigger ones would be budget. We do operate at a budget deficit. We dip into our reserves, which is obviously not sustainable for the long term, and we definitely need to heed the lessons of other districts and be proactive and making thoughtful decisions now so that we can avoid drastic decisions in the future. We're also going through a period of enrollment decline due to population decline in our area, and our five-year study hasn't shown a big boost coming our way. So this has led to uneven enrollment across our buildings, which makes it hard to distribute resources equitably. Last year, we tried to address, took some initial steps to address this by moving, changing boundaries at Cloverdale to ease some of the tightness that was being felt there, with students receiving services in the hallway. Now, most recently, we've heard from students and staff at Roy DeShane about their concern over declining populations at their school. Students don't have, you know, a lot of peers to mix with. There's just one section of each grade, and teachers don't have a lot of peers to plan with.
Thank you. Candidate Levatt.
Thank you. I, I would, again, echo what the other candidates have said, but, and of course, staff and student body well-being should be at the forefront, but personally, the biggest issue I feel like we're facing is, like, is stagnation, stagnation in test scores, which is, which goes towards closing the achievement gap. But when comparing ourselves to our sister districts, Glen Allen, Lombard, D-44, D-16, we are well below them, and, well, we are middling at best, but we excel in nothing compared to reading, math, and, English, sorry, or science, reading, math, and science. I'm, my apologies. And I, and I feel like that should be a, is something that we should pursue. A more equitable dispersion of the students across our current schools would, would go towards helping that as well, because right now, we have some schools with 70, or not 70, with more population than others.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, following up on that very topic of declining enrollment, we did have a question that in 2000, when the district opened its sixth elementary school, there were 5,100 students. Today, there are 3,100 students. Roy DeShane is projected to have 190 students next year. Last year, the district ran a $1.3 million deficit. This year's projected budget is at $4.2 million deficit. Given the student population decrease, deficit spending, and uncertainty at the federal level, do you support closing Roy DeShane and consolidating district resources? We'll begin with candidate Williams.
I support whatever, you know, obviously, we, we need to gather as, not only a board, but as a community on this topic. I know it's a very sensitive topic for people, and the thought of closing a school, nobody wants to think about that, or, you know, that's a very scary thing for a lot of people. But at the end of the day, the Board of Education is responsible for doing what is most fiscally responsible and making sure that we have equity across the district. So to answer the question, I guess if that was a, a clear recommendation that was made, if that was something that was brought and had input from staff, from all stakeholders, I could support whatever direction or whatever suggestion was made, assuming that we have data to support it.
Thank you. Candidate Groves.
Well, a lot of what Allison said, I fully support looking into whatever options we have for, for Roy. It certainly is going through declining enrollment. I understand the concerns of teachers and students there, and, you know, the only options are bring students in or take students out. And so we really need to look at what we need to do, what we can do to help that school and to help the district overall while being fiscally responsible. So yeah, I'm certainly open to pursuing that, looking into it, and ultimately coming up with a recommendation, and I would support whatever the recommendation says is best for the district.
Candidate Levatt.
This is, this is, so this is not a new question. It's been a topic before, and I, I do support the idea of consolidation. I think it would play into a more equitable classroom at, at the other schools, and I think a lot can be done with the money that would be saved from closing, I suppose, Roy, reinvesting in our teachers and our remaining schools. We're not talking about closing a school because of, of issues at the school. We're talking about closing a school because of trends. As you pointed out, the, like, illinoisreportcard.com shows that we have declining enrollment every year for, like, for the last 20 years. I do feel strongly that it needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Candidate Rasvi.
The key things that I've already mentioned in terms of my candidacy is looking at data-driven decisions, so I think I will ensure that we look at all of the data before we make any decisions. I think the other key thing that is important to me is also transparency, so ensuring that we're hearing the voices of the stakeholders. And obviously, that includes our students, parents, community members, educators, administrators, before we are actually proposing any decisions or, or options that we'd be looking at. And then I think, you know, as we, as we listen to that, I think the data-driven decision is important, but we also need to listen to the narratives and the stories of the community. You know, what is essential, you know, what solutions that we can actually come up with overarchingly that would be beneficial for the broader community and those involved. So, you know, looking to see what would minimize the impact. So again, whatever resources are actually invested in Roy, if they can actually be reverted to something else that would benefit the community and the district overarchingly and our students, I think that we really need to ensure that we are communicating broadly that to the community as well, so they understand.
Thank you. Drilling down on this subject a little bit more, what are your priorities, your individual priorities, that you will be considering when dealing with a deficit budget? And candidate Groves, we'll begin with you.
Obviously, one of our biggest spends is on salary, so I think being very thoughtful about creating new positions at the district level is something that we need to think about, and I think that's something we're already doing as people, as we have attrition through, you know, retirement, to people leaving. We're looking at, can we, you know, rather than a one-for-one replacement of that position, can we, you know, rework how kind of we're working things? And I think that's a big one there. We already, you know, we have our capital plans, we have our maintenance plans, and, you know, we can kind of take a look at, especially with maintenance, you don't want to put things off, but you can kind of look at, are there things that we can maybe, a little bit, some of our capital projects? We've already kind of started, you know, maybe not this summer, but the next summer, we can put it off a little bit. So I think those are, you know, some of the things that we can look at and aren't looking at.
Candidate Levatt.
Well, I, I do not have the advantage of being an incumbent and the insight that comes along with that, but it, the, the idea of consolidating resources and schools seems to be a sound one. It would allow us to reinvest, and that is, that is the important part. Like, I hate to keep bringing it up, but our special education program is well below all the surrounding districts. It was, it was, it was not a, it was pretty startling to see the numbers the other day, and something needs to be done about that. Yes.
Thank you. Candidate Rasvi.
Sure. I think that, you know, again, budget constraints are always front and center when it comes to making any decisions, et cetera. And, you know, in most instances, we probably do operate at a deficit or, you know, break even at best. So in terms of priorities, again, I, I don't have the experience of being on the board or looking at this more objectively and specifically, but I would, what I would look at is, again, overarchingly, what are we spending our money on? And are we maximizing efficiencies in those areas would be really key. I think, again, looking to see, you know, if there's creative ways that we can actually bring in more money to support in, in regards to that. So obviously, there's a lot of uncertainties in the curtain environment with the changes of the federal government and potentially, you know, impact as a result of that, but, you know, looking to see if there might be grant opportunities or other ways that we can actually look to, you know, be more creative in terms of generating some of that revenue that would be really needed.
Thank you. Candidate Williams.
I echo the concerns that have been, that have come up at the federal level. I know that's heavy on a lot of people's minds, and I would want to make sure, first and foremost, that regardless of anything, we are always putting students first and their needs, and so making sure that especially those higher-risk populations that are covered currently on the federal level, you know, that to make sure, and making sure we're asking questions, making sure our kids are going to have lunch, making sure, you know, our special needs populations are going to get what they need. Those are going to be at the forefront, as well as continuing to address, you know, as inflation occurs, continuing to make sure, you know, we are keeping up with the increased costs and, and making sure we're doing everything we can, and, you know, certainly asking questions, looking at the budget, deep diving into it, like, I had recently asked about the co-teaching model in special education and what that meant and what that looks like. We have a lot of co-teachers, so I see my time is up.
Switching topics just a little bit here. How can the schools better support and engage underrepresented communities, including the students of, of different racial, cultural, and socioeconomic backgrounds? Candidate Levatt.
I, as a community member, I am, I am happy with 93's efforts in the area, but what I hear from some of the people that I've spoken to and is valid is we need better, we need better representation for our students. We need more teachers that look like our students. It was, I, I think, like, 32% or 28% students are black and 1% of the teachers are black. And the same, the same goes for Hispanic, and that's not a fault of the district, because I know their efforts are there in hiring, but the hiring process needs to be reviewed and see how we can do better there.
Candidate Rasvi.
Thank you. So I think, again, our district and our schools have made huge strides in providing, increasing and supporting diversity and inclusivity in our community, and I think this is a very important topic as we become more globalized and our, you know, careers that our students would be looking at would be at such a huge level. And diversity, again, comes in many different flavors, so I think first recognizing all of that, identifying areas that we, we do have strengths in and areas that do need additional addressing would be really key. And I think in terms of, you know, ensuring that we are actually representing that for our student, I think one of the key things in me running for the board is to actually make sure that, you know, I am putting up that, the face of diversity for our students in regards to that, and also looking to see, you know, are we, in terms of the administration or the staff in particular, are looking at diverse hiring practices as well? But again, understanding that that does need to be merit-based and in line with our, you know, what is best for our students as well. So I think those would be some of the key ways, but again, ensuring and making sure that even in the short term, that we are providing students with that opportunity to, you know, support diversity and inclusion in.
Thank you. Thank you. Candidate Williams.
I too support diverse hiring practices and encourage the recruitment and retention of diverse teachers and staff to reflect our student population. I think that we have asked a lot of good questions at board meetings about this. Where are we going to find these teachers? You know, are we sending people to Black leaders in education conferences, to colleges where they have dual-language programs and are teaching teachers to be dual-language educators? So we've asked a lot of these questions, and I think that we are really, I, I'm hoping pushing in that direction toward improving diverse hiring practices. I also fully support making sure parents have communications in their, their preferred language and making that more universal across the district. Like I said, I like, to echo what the others have said, I feel we've made strides here, but as far as making sure our district is equitable and inclusive, but there's always room to grow.
Candidate Groves, how can, how can the schools better support and engage with underrepresented communities, including students of different racial, cultural, and socioeconomic backgrounds?
The board is responsible for setting, you know, the vision and the tone for the district, and it's important that we lead with our words and our actions. And I think now more than ever, I think there's probably a lot of, you know, discomfort in the community around these issues. I recently had the opportunity as a board member with, along with another member, we went into our middle schools and spoke to student councils about the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion to the board. You know, we talked to them about, you know, You know, we talked to them about, you know, what that should look like in a school. We got to ask them, you know, areas where they see, you know, the school not living up to that. And we really expressed to them that the board cares, you know, about all of our students, all of their backgrounds, and that we want to hear from them when we're doing things right and we're doing things wrong. And so it was really thrilling when we had a group of students that was from the group that we spoke to came to our meeting last week, and they had prepared some remarks that they gave in open session. And they talked about some of the shortcomings that they saw with, you know, discipline actions at our schools. And we were all so happy that they came and that they could speak out to us.
Thank you. Since you've all have kind of touched on this topic, what strategies would you suggest to be used to recruit and retain high-quality teachers for the district? We know that this has been in the news recently, the difficulty of recruitment and retention. So how would you address it as a board member? Candidate Rosby.
Sure. So again, I think in terms of looking at all of the different options and considering that, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty that we would be going forward with in the coming years, I think that we would really need to look at more creative ways as to how we can do this. Obviously, you know, financial, you know, benefits are a key aspect, but I think there's other areas that we can also focus. I think that if we make it a really good environment, there's other professional development opportunities that can also be offered that would attract, you know, top talent in the area as well. And so those would be some of the key things. But again, I think, you know, promoting, you know, key values, I think people are really driven by that as well. So it's not always the financial benefits, et cetera, but promoting and ensuring that we're communicating and living those values that we're demonstrating across the board, I think would be really beneficial as well.
Thank you.
Candidate Williams.
Well, we had a really strong year last year with retention. We had 91% retention rate in our teachers, which was great. And repeatedly on the Five Essential Survey, our teachers rate our mentorship program very high. So I'm very pleased with the retention numbers, where they stand right now. As far as recruitment, I would love to see us, as I mentioned earlier, expand into making sure we are targeting, especially specific to our programs, such as dual-language, gifted programming, you know, where are we going to, are we going to the right places to recruit these very specialized teachers, including special education? Those that are difficult to fill positions. Where are we finding and are we going to the best places to find these people?
Candidate Groves.
I think part of this will start with when people do leave, doing a very strong exit interview and find out why they are leaving. I think it's key to understand that so that we know what we can do better. We do have one of the higher starting salaries in the area, so I think that is a benefit to us. And we just had a presentation recently on some benefit programs we have that other districts don't have, like loan repayments for continuing education and things like that. And I think that's something that we can use to promote ourselves more when we are searching for candidates. And like Allison said, just moving into different areas, looking at different places other than the norm that we've been going to for candidates. Also, as a board, I know we've really been pushing to ease restrictions around our communications with staff. And I'm hoping that as that happens and as our staff gets to know that we are more available to them, that just in general, as a district, that becomes more attractive to them, that, you know, they know that they have a board that fully supports them, that they can come to with issues.
Thank you.
Candidate Levat.
Our hiring, my understanding is we mainly try and hire from C O D and Wheaton colleges right now, which is fine. But I don't think it's producing the diverse staff that we need to pursue. I think things like fast-track tenureship that the state introduced the other year is going to go a long way in retaining and getting quality educators. I think having a strong incentive to send more of our staff to train, further training opportunities would go a long way as well if incoming and potential educators felt that they would be supported here and that their career would be, their career and their development would be supported. Thank you.
Thank you.
Candidate Williams, we'll begin this question with you. What role does the board play in making students and staff feel safe?
I feel they play a vital role in that by setting the tone and the vision for the district, you know, which is really the board's responsibility to listen to community voice and all stakeholders, whether that be staff, students, parents, in making sure that we have procedures and policies that support student safety and wellness in our schools. So I feel that we play a very big role, and I feel like everything starts at the top, right? So you start at the top, the board's at the top, along with the superintendent, and we have to set the stage for that.
Candidate Groves.
We've heard students, they can't learn if they don't feel safe. As a district, we've invested a lot into making our buildings safe from outside threats. But, you know, food insecurity, bullying, you know, mental health issues, these all affect how our students feel as far as safety goes as well. And so these are things that our district can address. We have, as a district, we have a lot of programs to help disadvantaged students. We have a lot of connections to other places that have programs that I think we need to do a better job of connecting parents to who need them. We just really need to, and I think we do a fairly good job of this, just connecting to the whole child. And, you know, now, you know, more than ever, we just need to promote the diversity of our community and how much we value the diversity in our community. And, you know, as we heard from our students who came here and spoke, you know, they have concerns with discipline in schools. And so that is something we need to hear what they're saying to us, and we need to be following up on that, going into schools, having these conversations with students to help them feel safe at school.
Thank you.
Candidate Levat. What role does the board play in making students feel safe?
It does start at the top. And data-driven decisions would be helpful. Where do we stand with bullying and providing an inclusive environment for our students so they want to come to school? It's my understanding that we are well off on the safety front. I know that we've invested a lot into building safety over the previous years. I know that was a big focus of the previous board before the current one. It comes, we need, the board needs to see what, I'm sorry, I'm losing my words. Go ahead, I'll pass.
Candidate Rosby.
So I think the others have already mentioned a lot of great ideas, so I would definitely echo those. I do want to emphasize, in addition to those, is that we need to be able to respond to our students and our staff in more real time. So, you know, depending on whatever the issues they may be facing, we need to be able to address those, particularly in terms of safety. So again, looking at policies and procedures that we have in place, I think one thing that the board can also offer is greater visibility and connection. And I think the more our students see us in that regard, the more they would actually be comfortable in terms of engaging with us as well and providing feedback. And the same goes for staff and parents as well, I would say, because again, it's all very interconnected. And I think the other thing I want to emphasize is also ensuring that our staff have the resources available as well to be able to support students, along with parents as well. I think the education piece is very key in bringing awareness and providing a variety of tools is very essential for the entire community, everybody that's involved. Thank you.
One of the topics that's been in the news lately is cell phones in the classroom. So do you support or oppose a ban on phones in the classrooms? And what is the reasoning behind your position? Candidate Groves.
As a parent, I know, given the current environment where I am and some of our gun control issues, as a parent, I feel safer knowing that if something happened in the school, my child would have a way to communicate. But as a board member and as someone who, you know, talks to teachers about the disruptions that these things can have, I see that point as well. So I'll be honest, I'm very torn on this issue. I do think we need to find ways to make them less disruptive. I know in the middle school, they don't care, they don't keep them in their classrooms. They do have to keep them in the locker rooms. I know my younger girl in grade school, she has hers in her backpack, and that's where it stays. So whether or not we had an official ban at the grade school level, there are just about no phones at all, that I would find hard to support just from a safety level. But I do understand that we do, we do need some restrictions in place, and it's definitely an ongoing discussion. It's not an easy issue.
Candidate Levat.
I feel much the same way. Inherently, I do not want to think about cell phones being in our classrooms. I think it's a distraction. It's proven itself to be a distraction. On the same front, it's, we also have numerous examples of students communicating during serious and important events because they have that. I think it should be handled like it's currently being handled. We have the cell phones in our classroom, and if it's proven a disruption, it's taken away and given back at the end of the day. There will always be phones in the classroom. So it's more of a question of discipline, in my opinion.
And candidate.
Rosby.
I would say that I'm very divided as well, similar to Meredith and Michael. But I think that there can be a balance that should be struck in terms of this. So I think the key aspect that I think most parents would worry about is in the situation that Meredith has already described. And I would say that's the priority for me as well, too. But keeping that in mind, again, I think we need to ensure that we're enhancing the safety of our schools as best as they can be. So we don't actually have to worry about that as parents and sending our kids to school and for the kids to also feel unsafe. And then also, I mean, I am very restrictive in terms of cellphone use because there's so much data and information that has come out in terms of the detrimental effects of what that can actually do to our kids. So I think that that should be more driven by age-appropriate use in the classroom. And as kids get older, they can have a better sense of responsibility and use on cell phones, that's what I would promote. But I do agree that there should be, you know, restrictions placed definitely to the use of them in classroom. But again, allow for access in case of emergencies.
Candidate Williams.
As an educator and board member, I fully support not having cell phones in the classroom. I feel like they not only can be a distraction for learning, but also, I know, a concern I've heard from parents is they can't reach their children during the school day, which I can completely relate to. That is very difficult. However, I think to some degree, when we're not, as parents, available all the time to our children, it kind of encourages them to have more independence and problem-solve on their own. And I think that that is also a positive. So I really, all of my, all of my different reasons support banning cell phones in the classroom.
Thank you.
Candidate Levat. What criteria should be used to determine the selection and removal of materials in school libraries to ensure that they are appropriate, educational, and beneficial for students? And I'm going to ask you to scoot forward just a little bit to make sure the microphone is picking up your answers.
I feel pretty strongly about this. I feel this is a simple one. I would leave it in the hands of our educators, our librarian staff. I know that the community has a, there's a lot of opinions in the community. It previously was a divisive issue. But our students need that diversity in their education. And the state sent down a mandate. If a school district chooses to remove certain materials from their choices, they risk losing library funds. And that's one incentive to leave it in the hands of our educators. I think it should stay, be the prerogative of the professionals.
Candidate Rosby.
Sure. Again, I think this is a very important and contentious issue. But I think in terms of what needs to stay, again, I would definitely rely on the experts. So our librarians, our educators, et cetera, that do take a look at that. So again, it needs to be age-appropriate, ensuring that maybe perhaps younger kids don't have access to inappropriate materials that may be more designed for older kids. And I think this kind of goes in line with our value of diversity. So, you know, we don't want to actually shut down any perspectives or, you know, information that may be out there. And again, I think I do want to emphasize that it would be something that should be looked at individually and specifically as well in terms of what the content is reviewed and listening to the stakeholders that are involved. That includes obviously parents, community members, students, administrators, obviously teachers as well, to ensure that we're balancing that aspect as well.
Candidate Williams.
I fully support having a variety of reading materials. I trust our librarians and school staff to make sure that the materials provided and the books provided are age-appropriate for our students. And I really feel it's important for our kids to see themselves in literature. So through the characters and the stories, that they look like them, they have similar interests, you know, their viewpoints are similar, that they can relate to characters and books. Also, I believe that the internet provides much more of a threat than our school libraries. So, you know, being able to search the internet these days, you can find a lot more materials that would be concerning to me than anything in our school library.
Candidate Groves.
Like I mentioned, I've been a volunteer at the Cloverdale Library since my middle school or was in kindergarten, so I really had a front row seat to the care that our librarians put into not just what books are in the library, but what books they choose to highlight to our students and recommend to our students. And I just trust them implicitly to know what is appropriate for our students at every level. And also, let's not forget that books should challenge you. Our students should encounter books with ideas different than their own that open their worlds to new things. And as a parent, I think what better time than when they are surrounded by capable, intelligent adults who can help walk them through new ideas and help them understand new ideas? So, you know, I hope that every student in our district at one point or another encounters a book in our library that makes them think differently about something. And so I just, I trust our educators to fill our libraries with those books and know what's appropriate for them.
Thank you.
Next question will deal with transparency. So what grade would you give the school district regarding transparency and communication between the school board, parents, teachers, and the community? And if you could make one or two suggestions, what would they be to improve your grade? Candidate Rosby.
I would say that I think that the district does a really great job of actually communicating and being transparent. You know, there's a lot of communication that goes out in terms of newsletters, emails, and obviously, we have the opportunity to attend board meetings as well and voice our concerns or, you know, any positive feedback that we may have as well. So I think that's good. And the minutes obviously are posted online as well, so if you wanted to review anything. I think that I have at least found all board members and other staff in the district as well to be very approachable. So that's been very beneficial. I think that that really helps parents and students also see that, you know, that is something that the district appreciates. I've also been, I've also witnessed the district, the school board promoting students' achievements as well. So that also serves as a very positive aspect. I think one thing that I would like to implement is perhaps, for those that are not able to attend meetings live, maybe having some sort of virtual option, I think that would be really great because that way it would allow the community to engage a little bit better.
Candidate Williams.
I would give us a B, and I'll tell you why. The B would be for, I think overall, as a district, our communication is very good via newsletters, communication when there's an incident in the school. We do receive a lot of information, which is wonderful. However, I feel we have some work to do at a board level. I would love to see our board meetings also recorded and broadcasted online. I'd love to see more details in our minutes if we're not doing, for example, virtual recording. I would also, you know, our Five Essential Survey data indicates that maybe at the building level, between, let's say, building administration and teachers, like, that communication could improve. So are there areas that need improvement? Always. But I would like to see, you know, those specific areas be looked on.
Thank you.
Candidate Groves.
I would echo a lot of what they've said. I think we're a solid B-plus, A-minus on our communication to parents. Probably an A is communication to our parents. I think we're very good about that. But like Allison said, at a board level, we have some work to do. I think we could have certainly some more robust minutes. I got to see some of the District 25 who went before us, and they talked about something they do, which I think was some sort of board summary that they do after every meeting. And my ears perked up at that. It sounded like some sort of newsletter that just kind of, they talk about what they do. It sounded like some sort of newsletter that just kind of, they talked about what the board did, a little bit more conversational than, than the minutes. And I think that something like that would be great for our parents. And tonight, the camera there, I'm now well aware that we could easily be recording these meetings and put them online. And I think that is something we should be looking into doing.
Candidate Levat?
I feel the communication I get from the schools is top-notch. If anything happens, I'm getting an email, anything in one of my children's schools. For the, at the board level, though, I give them a C, B minus. I think they are good on transparency, and the minutes are available, but there's, there's a, a large portion of the community that is Spanish-speaking only. And I was really surprised to see that our minutes are, there's only an English PDF online. And lastly, I'd like to, I really support the idea of having like a, a live stream. I figured that's something that would have been born out of the COVID area. The district made a huge effort towards pushing to virtualization, and they did a good job with it, too, I believe. I'm just, I'd like to see, I'd like to see that at the board meeting level. Sorry.
Thank you.
Well, my last question for you is this. As you were preparing for this meeting and you were getting nervous about what questions were going to be asked of you and would you have the answers? What question did you think I was going to ask that I didn't ask? And how would you answer it? So what question did you think I was going to ask that I didn't? And how would you answer that? Candidate Williams?
So one of the questions, you know, I thought that we might get asked was about how the district is addressing bullying specifically. So, you know, and how are we making sure our environment is safe and inclusive? So I know, you know, what, I know that we do address it through, you know, prevention programs, social-emotional learning, and, you know, anonymous reporting. And I think it's so important that we continue to, and I've been an advocate for this through my whole first term, social-emotional learning and making sure it's done with fidelity and making sure that all of our programs that involve safety are top-notch, are up to date, reflect best practices. I think it's important for every child to have a relationship with an adult in the building and making sure that teachers have the tools and resources and the training to address these issues as they occur, as well as training and restorative practices, because that's a big push and I don't think that right now everybody knows what exactly that is or what it looks like.
Thank you.
Candidate Groves? What question do you, did you think I was going to ask that I didn't? And how would you answer it?
I thought that there would be something about preparing our students for the digital world or how much electronics we use in the classroom, something with regards to that. I heard recently someone said that, you know, we're really preparing our students for jobs that don't exist yet, and I think that that's really true. And all of the technology, it's not going anywhere and it's on us to teach them how to use it responsibly. And I think that, you know, we do a pretty good job of doing that. I know my daughter, right now, in middle school, is in an information and media literacy class, which I think is great, what she is learning in there. And I know that we do this at the grade school level, too. We're teaching them, you know, kind of about their digital footprint and being safe online. And we push this out to parents as well in town halls. But then also just about how much technology we do use in the classroom. I know for me, sometimes I would like to see my, my students completing more, you know, work on paper, more work in actual books. But I also realize that that's just because that's what's normal to me and maybe it's not so much normal now. You know, I think, you know, why aren't they learning cursive? But then I'm like, when is the last time I wrote cursive? So I think that we just have to kind of adapt to that today is different than it was for us.
Thank you. Thank you. And candidate Levat?
I did think that we would be asked about test scores, if only because I, I, I come from a background of metrology and, and measurements or everything. And it's, it's, we're, we're, we're just above state average, which is okay, but we, we should be comparing ourselves to our neighboring districts. And as I previously stated, we are, we aren't there. Whether that means we need, we need to support our educators better. I would like to see more investment into like our special education program and dual We should, we should be doing better. We spend a lot of money on our, on our education and, yeah.
Thank you.
Candidate Rasvi?
One area that we thought, I thought we would expand on further is social media use as well. So I know we've touched on, you know, use of cell phones in the classroom, but I think that's probably another area that is very key for the district to be able to address, not just with students, but I think also with parents as well. So a lot of education's needed around that because it, it impacts so many different areas, you know, the social, mental, emotional aspects of our students and ultimately physical well-being as well, you know, if they're using excessively, you know, how, how that could be impacting them. And I think the other area that I thought we, that we could focus on also would be smoother transitions. I think that sometimes there's a bit of a disconnect in terms of transitions. And my older daughter actually went to school during COVID in, in terms of middle school, so I don't know if it's a little bit of that or if it's actually, you know, we are lacking when in our, our students, especially in their formative years, really need to be equipped and in terms of the skills and habits to make those transitions, not just from middle school to high school, but also career and life, life transitions as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's time for closing statements. You, you survived the forum. So we'll begin with candidate Groves, your one-minute closing statement.
So first of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum tonight and to anyone here who's in the audience who took the time to come or to anyone who watches it online later on, thank you for your time. I think you've got four good candidates up here, I won't pretend otherwise, but I will take this opportunity to ask you to use two of your votes for Allison Williams and myself. I did not know Allison prior to running in 2023, but in the last two years, I found a kindred spirit. We don't always see eye to eye on the issues, but I've never once doubted that whatever her opinion was, it came from a place of putting students first. We always listen to each other. I know there have been times she's changed my mind and I think there's been times I've changed hers. And I think that's what you want on a board. You need individuals who trust each other even when they don't agree, who can have conversations and get to the bottom of issues. And I think that is how, you know, good decisions that serve everyone get made. We've both always spoken our mind, we've been frank, and we've just fully committed to ourselves to the great responsibility that this position is.
Thank you.
Candidate Levat? Your one-minute closing statement.
Of course, thank you for, for having me here and giving me this opportunity and thank you to everyone in the audience as well. I look forward to the opportunity to continue hearing from the community. And if I was to be elected, I, I promise to make myself available to the community and bring their concerns to the board and act in a, in a manner that is responsible towards the, the district and our children. I believe our children are, should be first priority and educators a close second. Our educators are what mold our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
And candidate Rasvi, your one-minute closing statement?
So again, as a parent and community member, I'm really committed to making sure that all of our students thrive and excel and lay a very strong foundation in their formative years. I also want to ensure that we have the support that's needed by our staff and our educators in order to ensure that, because there really are the boots on the ground. And I really aim to come at our school district's efforts with creative, fresh ideas, bring my professional experience, and work efficiently with stakeholders by truly listening to all voices, supporting the learning and well-being of our students, and by leading with data-driven decisions that are best for our students and our community. Again, I thank you for the opportunity and would be honored to have your support and vote on our Before You Go First.
Thank you.
And candidate Williams, your one-minute closing statement?
I'd like to thank Meredith for your kind words, and I could not agree more, and I have learned a lot from you, so thank you. And I think that we make a great duo and a great partnership, and I would want everybody to also consider two votes for Meredith and I. And something you should know about me is, and Meredith both, we both approached this role with passion and unwavering ethics and the courage to tackle tough decisions head-on. We've become well-versed in navigating challenging conversations and over the years have made uncomfortable, have been in uncomfortable situations and always advocated for what's best for kids. I know we take great pride in our commitment to standing up for what is right in the best interest of children regardless. And so our students are strongest when students feel, or our schools are strongest when students feel supported and educators are val, educators are valued and our families are engaged, so we want to continue that good work.
Thank you so much.
Please join me in thanking the candidates for being here. Our democracy thrives when all of us are engaged. Attending or watching a candidate forum is an excellent way to be empowered to join discussions on local issues and make your voice heard on Election Day. We hope that each and every one of you will vote and inspire your family, friends, and neighbors to do the same. Information on how and when to vote can be found on vote411.org and the League of Women Voters of Wheaton website and social media. We hope you take advantage of early voting, which began on March 17th, since Election Day, April 1st falls during spring break. Recording of this forum can be found on the League of Women Voters of Wheaton website. So thank you so much for being here. Good luck on the campaign trail and good night.